The corner of the room. And now someone special. I'll be in word, please, on your left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Almighty God, watch over all policemen and non- enforcement officers while they perform their duties under increasing danger. Be with and help us support especially the Lindbergh Police Department as they work to keep our streets safe. Be with those here this evening as they carry out the responsibilities and leadership in our community. Thank you for the example of Jesus who helped us to see the seating at the popularity of not keep us from doing on his desk. Help us to choose the right course when it is not the popular one. We pray for our citizens as they participate in the upcoming election, realizing the important role they play in getting elected. We pray this with you in our midst. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. Public input at this time, I think, then?
Yes. My name is Jennifer Vitals and I'm with Liberty National. It's really nice to see the pledge of allegiance of prayer stuff. I would say everywhere though. Just wanted to talk to you a little bit about my partnering to use some supplemental benefits with our employees. A little bit about Liberty National. We were founded in 1900, so we have been around for like some time. We have offices nationwide. I am out of my home in that signage and in our main office for this area is in which top. So we are their business bureau member and we also have top ratings with all the financial institutions such as Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, I don't know if that's... So we basically need that we have strong financial standing and we have a tracker that pay our claims. Basically what we do is we would just come in to senior employees. We wouldn't take more than about 10, 15 minutes with each person because we do understand that your business has to continue. But what we do first is we give everyone on behalf of the city a $3,000 accident by fire insurance policy for themselves, $2,000 for spouse and $1,000 for child. We also issue everyone a discount card that works on mention here in our practical description there. So that's discount card, non-insurance cards, so that's above and beyond whatever they get on their insurance. The reason we do that is that we don't spend any marketing money. We like to channel that money back into something that will help our customers in their time of need. That's why we do that. And those benefits are free each year at every new time. The main reason that cities and counties and businesses tap us in is that we have a very unique life insurance policy that's exclusive to Liberty National and can't be anywhere else. The employee will walk in at the age they are ready to take the policy out. They have the option to be paid up at age 65, going into retirement, retire to reduce expenses. Yet their coverage lasts them until age 100. So it's affordable. Should they leave or need to retire early for some reason, they can take that with them. And either way, it does not take any kind of conversion or whether you always keep the same base value, you can always keep the same group. It's, I guess you could call it a term that covers a hole. So it's very unique. You can't really compare it to term and you can't really compare it to hole when it's in between. We also have a couple different ways you can go on cancer policies. We've got a lot called one and done. You choose anywhere between $50,000 upon diagnosis, that check is cut, and then that policy goes away. A little more popular is our cancer endurance policy that has no lifetime maximum. Gives the patient a little money upfront to kind of help with initial costs. Covers tons of things, but where it really shines is when they take chemo, radiation, and blood transfusions. We get $500 per day for those treatments and that's the most of anyone that I can put where at. It also has no lifetime maximum. Should they get a diagnosis and go to remission, it comes back or they get a second diagnosis for different cancer, they're still covered. So that's the really good thing about it. And we have critical illness that is also one and done. It covers heart attack, stroke, renal failure, major organ transplant. So again, they choose anywhere between $50,000 upon diagnosis, that check is cut, and then that policy goes away. One that's becoming very popular is our accident policy because of rising due to death tolls and max out of pockets. Should you get by an accident and go to the emergency room, you have to go within 48 hours of it, which sure, we don't have that. They get $500 to help pay for that cost. So hopefully that will cover your death toll or close to it. Should they be hospitalized, they get $1,000 and then so much per day while they're in the hospital. Basically if they use it within a four by year period, then more the pays herself because it's very phenomenal to have. And average payout company wise, about $1,200 per person. There is no maximum on that either. So if you go to the emergency room 20 times or two times, you're still going to be covered. Another really good thing about it is that it is not industry specific. Most accident policies are. You have to have some of these stitches before you're covered or something like that. If you're hurt by an accident and you go to the emergency room within 48 hours, we're going to cover that. So basically, we do a needs based approach only. So we don't want to sell anybody things that they don't need. We just kind of go through all the needs analysis with everyone and if they feel they have a need that needs to be covered, then we get care of that. Then what I would do is get, I guess probably to give you an Excel spreadsheet with everyone who purchased and what they've purchased and how much the due death toll deduction is. And get that to you. We would also set up your section 125 book, no prompts. That's what allows us to do the majority of what we do at pre-tax. So there's a little savings on both sides for the pre-tax. Anybody have any questions?
Jennifer, we have an employee benefit committee and I'm sure you fast forward information and you know, if you're here or whoever, we can bring that to that committee and we'll do this thing too. So first you come in and being here and bringing that information and again, very, very wonderful to have.
We want to get a good time break, time break to follow up with them. The next two weeks are pretty busy, so probably the first one is... Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for being here first. Anybody else here for public input? Seeing amendments to the agenda? Very none, moving on to the mayor's report. Happy to say the EMS building is on go. We're making progress. It's been a long bit in coordination for a little while. But it's on go, the bids are out there as they read and they're bidding on that and you should see progress on that fairly quick. Been moving along and in fact, double in people down to me here EMS and they're very excited to get that going, get it up and they feel it'll really benefit the EMS department. We're very excited to see that happen. Remember to vote. I'm sure you've had a few calls. Love you to vote. I got Dr. Mrs. Yulskin right before I left. She called me personally. She didn't listen to me, but she kept talking. She said, "Why are you still calling me?" So remember to vote when you're out there. We do that. Remember to watch after your neighbors, eat back and that and you know, just keep an eye on your neighbors and those kind of things. Do that, it opens the position in Ward 4. I'm sorry, 2, I'm sorry, on 4 for some reason, I guess. Ward 2. And if you have names, council members, please submit those to me and let me know. We'll have a decision here. Bring it back for recommendation by the next council meeting. And remember to recycle. It was good to see the blue body parts out today. I'm a very much believer in that from a long time back and it seems like more and more people are recycling. We need to get John to give us a report on what we're doing there. Consent agenda, what's your desire?
Would you approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Kelly, yes, Betty, yes, Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ema?
Yes.
Agenda carried, item 7. Is there anything to punch in zone?
No.
Nothing on their old business, will move to new business. Item 9A, sewer line cleaning quote. Ken, you rise for that?
Yeah. Yeah, the line cleaning for many years. Our specialty service has been contracted for quite some time. They try to get another bid and share. It's funded for $9,000. We'd like to have five to six thousand feet line clean and then two, three thousand feet televised. It's kind of a little bit hard to press. Not to exceed $9,000.
What is your desire?
I think we should approve our special services not to exceed $9,000 for the second. So will this... Sure. Will this be televised?
Two, three thousand feet of the clean line will be televised.
Okay.
It will not be broadcast.
I mean, do you use a screen?
Although, we can make arrangements.
I know in the past, at some point, we did some smoke testing stuff. Is that ever, is that at a certain scale that you're getting any rainwater or other stuff that we're treating water that shouldn't be going down?
I don't think our infiltration's too bad.
It's not very bad, no.
Okay, nothing to worry about. Okay. Any other questions with Tim or Chris? Roll call, please.
Ema?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty, yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Item carried, item 9B, is the service proposal. Eric rises for that.
We've set out for bid, the audit proposals a couple, three years ago. Dave O'Dell, who had been doing our audits, had been doing it later, maybe later than we wanted, so we went out for bids. With the idea of giving the audits done later than June 30th. Dave O'Dell, he'll meet those requirements. He can submit a proposal. Last year, however, he did sell his business down around there in Wall Charter. They are willing to stay with the contract that they had. So this is the third year of the contract at $18,000. Next year, if we want, we can go out for another three year audit service proposal. This is the third year of the contract.
Counselor, what is your desire?
I'd like the motion to approve $18,000 for 2016 audit services to... To Adam Brown, Barry and Wall Charter.
Sir. Moving in second, discussion.
Are they able to meet the deadline that you want?
They are, yes, they are.
Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion carried. Counselor, item 9C, managed IT service proposal. Frank, are you speaking to this?
Yes. We put together an IT committee to conduct interviews for firms to provide IT services to the city. We were looking for a new service provider due to the prior provider not meeting all of the requirements that we need. Interviewed four companies, Reach Solutions, Networks Plus, we're all up top of my head, The Tech Junkies, and also ISG. Now, the recommendation of the committee is to enter into agreement with Reach Solutions. Monthly service amount of $3,215 per month. This includes managed IT services, hosting the email exchange, data backup and business continuity protection. There would also be a one-time appliance fee of $3,149.
What is your desire, counsel?
We'll refer to Reach Solutions for IT services at $3,215 per month and a one-time backup appliance fee of $3,149.
Moving in second, discussion.
What is the, what's the status of the appliance which I understand provides automatic backup and serve matter every 15 minutes and a couple other things? What happens to that appliance if the contract just lasts for a year and the same topic? What happens if it's a one-time fee? So if the contract is renewed every year, that doesn't have to be replaced or updated?
We have with us today Shad Wilson, who is the president of Reach Solutions. He probably addressed that more directly than I can.
Sure. So yeah, the one-time appliance fee comes with a free warranty. So even if you didn't renew with Reach Solutions, you can continue using that for three years at that same monthly fee, which is part of the on the other book down there, the bottom of the monthly cost.
Other questions?
This doesn't have to have anything to do with maintenance of smaller electronic devices like the...
Big bubble devices or? Not really, no.
Desktop.
Desktop network, those types of issues.
If I saw the data amount on the cloud service to be one terabyte, do we have any idea what our current data usage is?
The backups.
Most likely not. I would think we have a half terabyte. I think we're on a couple hundred gigabytes.
Yeah, that's correct. Close to 300. That way we can keep out there three years, hopefully, more than one month.
Additional questions?
So this includes software maintenance as far as...
Well, it includes making sure that all of our patches are updated, those types of things, so that one, we're protected from security standpoint, we're also operating with less patches than are required and fix bugs, et cetera, within the primary systems that we use.
And you work with city governments elsewhere?
We do not have, we just probably have city, state branches, but we don't manage because it's so small. I can't really compare it to Lindbergh.
Changing those mail exchanges that do defend the emails themselves? They don't change it?
The email addresses do change. We will probably have a new password to the exchange server.
Right, okay.
We currently go through the next tech, don't we, for your service?
Yes.
You remember, I think you had five or something like that?
I think it's just four.
555, I love.
So this will eliminate that, obviously, not just be used for it. So it's correct.
That's a... You can point out that anytime next time. Additional questions? Carry none, roll call, please.
Ema?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to item B. Eric rises to talk about playground mulch.
The really number one safety concern like the valley from an audit that we had conducted earlier in the year was the level of fitness of the playground mulch in the playground. We've already purchased one load. I'd like to buy another load. I'd queue New York's same price. The price is low for three, four years now. Foster Village Products. Really happy with the service that they put for them. And I'll time this load, if you approve it, to a project that will work with the oncoming suites for Sweet Suite Volunteer Day on the 1st of August. So it's a nice time for that. Any questions?
What's your desire before we have questions?
I would recommend that we approve $2,155.50 to purchase 90 yards of playground mulch from Foster Village Products.
Sir. Gary, where's Austin? What are you selling?
It's a small town in southwest Missouri.
All right, thank you. Foster Village?
Foster.
Foster Village. Any other questions for Gary that make sense?
Curiosity and I think tying in with this, what else did they recommend?
Updating some chain rope to actually a cable. Wasn't a concern necessarily for the safety of the chain. They just wanted to see us using the most up-to-date product for that specific piece.
There were any massive rust places or?
No. Actually, that's correct. Well, we would see massive... Wait, I'm not sure if it's managed.
Okay, thank you. Before we go on, Gary, your motion, second.
You will be in motion at the end of the second.
Thank you. Gary, what about the, around the outside of the tile work? Is there some issues with some of the tile work?
Well, we've lost the tiles from handling them. And that's, that's a shame because we don't handle them by kids. We actually had a recent request for some livery on one of the fakes. That's been two years to them on those fronts. Other than that, our maintenance, we can check it from time to time.
So is there any discussion to try and replace the tiles or you just, it's empty spot?
It is an empty spot. In fact, I think I have about four tiles upstairs in Park's office. There's a problem that I'll try to get back and put it on. We've talked in the past this year about having a community refurbishment for a couple of playgrounds. And I think that's still something I'd do. Best on board and get out of any place as well.
Obviously, I've got to it and that does. The missing tiles be tracked severely from us there and would make sense to have a local artist such as Kate, you know, work on something like that.
Well, I'd like to see if anything would pursue. Personally, I don't, I don't see a lot of pipeline necessarily, but you know, there's some of those kids come back and they have to see the tile.
Yeah.
Haven't had...
Okay, thank you. Other questions, Gary? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Motion carried, item B. Ordnance number 5,000 is the report of the public.
What would you like to add?
Sir.
Moving second, is there any discussion or do you want to recite any of that? Yes, there will be. Anything, once I got that?
This is on the standard office report?
Yes, or book?
Uniform book, yes.
Uniform book, yes.
Not a lot of changes in the traffic vehicles sort of this dealing with DUIs. Okay, we're not going to want to for that.
Uniform public fence.
Okay, that's what I asked, is the public fence will travel?
They don't necessarily.
So probably a minute ago, the biggest change in the public fence code is, sorry, is the change with that. Right now, or it used to be $1,000 was the limit before it become a felony. So anything under $1,000 was misdemeanor and they changed it this year to 1,500. So now in under $1,500, it's a misdemeanor. So that's one of the changes in the public fence code. I think that's probably the biggest change.
This is something we do every year and we put the new one down now.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ema?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Motion carried, item F. Tim, tell us now about the standard traffic.
We do this every year.
What is your desire?
I'll make a recommendation with the ordinance number 5,001.
Second.
Moving in second, it has its own every year. Is there any discussion? Carry none, roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick, John, sorry. Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes. He's checked.
You sit back. He's made with us here. Anything else? No. Back to your chair. Item G, ordinance 5,002 authorizing the storm water drainage improvements.
This particular ordinance would authorize the storm water drainage improvements that have been identified as the restrictor plates on Colorado Avenue. Some channel work through to Garfield Street and converting the, that structure, grid structure there from two culvert to box culvert to allow water to flow through there. I also would like to introduce Rashider. He's with George K. Ball, our financial manager. So yeah, really take your questions. You're going to be the gentleman there.
Go ahead and step up, what's your desire?
Motion to adopt ordinance 5,002 regarding the operating storm water drainage improvements.
Moving in second now, are there questions that you wish to ask about finance?
This is our project, this is our...
Thank you for... Do you want to tell us something? You're asking other questions.
Yes. With Rashider, George K. Ball, the elder wiser, better looking person.
Those are either those...
I was thinking he didn't look like Rashider earlier.
No.
Yes, I'm with George K. Ball. We, probably about a month ago, just we were analyzing some of the cities yet and found, I believe, an opportunity to refund the Series A 2009 existing bonds. On the sheet I gave it out, on the top left-hand side, you can see those bonds, the callable portion of those bonds at interest rates ranging between 3.65% and 4.6%. Combined average, they're four and quarter percent. We think we can refund those with bonds ranging from 2% to 3%, which is on just the other side of that gray border. And bring our annuals, reduce principal and interest payments ranging, you know, averaging about $10,000 a year of gross principal and interest savings. Combined gross savings of $125,233.14. Present value savings of $112,771, which is equal to 8.506% present value savings over the refunded bonds. Chuck usually tells you that we look for a minimum target of 3%. Consider refunding. You can say this much better than that. So we think this is a good opportunity. When we brought this up to your administration, they said, "Well, we are thinking about doing a storm wastewater improvement project. If we combine that into this," and we said, "Yeah." And right to the right of the savings column is the new money portion of that bond issue. This would be combined into one year Series 2016 bond issue by slow months so you can see the savings margins. I think the project funded portion of that bond issue is 605,000. I think the project costs a little more than that, but your administration informed me that you already had some money covered for that. So required for that season. I'd be happy to answer any questions about this financing.
All we have set aside is $40.
What are the negatives?
This is an advanced refunding. I wouldn't say it's a negative, but it is an advanced refunding, which means the 2009 bonds aren't callable yet. They're actually not callable until October of 2018. So what we're going to be doing is... So what we're going to be doing is funding an escrow of government bonds to make those interest payments and call the bonds on holiday. So a drawback would be, I'd say there's three moving parts here. One is our bond market, uh, if interest rates rise, the savings goes down. If, in the escrow, government bonds go down, the escrow gets more expensive, the savings goes down. And if everything stays constant and, uh, you decide to do this in six months, if, if both markets stay the same, it would save more money because the escrow is less.
Yeah.
So those are the three, uh, you know, drawbacks that I find. Not really drawbacks, but.
Brett, when will these bonds go out? If we go forward and.
Um.
That way through G, we have to remain, we have to go back to G instead of.
Uh, these bonds will be dated and closed September 22nd.
So before the elections?
Yes.
I think that's even.
Absolutely.
Great.
So the, um, the bond that becomes callable, does that mean due? Does that mean, what is callable?
Callable means it's able to be paid off early.
Okay, so, um, that date right now is 2018?
Yes.
Okay, so what, what bond is this? We call it the killing light bond, is this the bond that did the?
I can't remember.
It's a refunding and improvement bond, which is the refunding of the hospital bond plus the improvements for Slaton Street, uh, Lincoln Street and the City Hall here. So that's the bond that's being refunded.
Okay, so, alright, thank you.
And one thing I'd like to point out from a maturity standpoint, even though we're refunding these earlier or early, the actual maturity of the refunding bond is not at a later date than what the existing bond would be. Both, if we didn't do anything, what's currently in place would be paid off in 2029. This refunding bond and general improvement bond would also, I shouldn't say, it's a drainage improvement bond, not general improvement, um, would be, is going, would be, uh, matured in 2029 also. So we didn't change the immaturity date at all.
So this is like, uh, doing a refinancing of mortgage by keeping the, the terms in.
And what about debt?
I have a question.
When you talk about how it can't be paid, so to speak, until 2018?
And if we look at this chart here, we have 2017, we have an interest amount. And as we go to the right, it has the savings on that interest amount. But won't we still be paying the normal amount of interest because we have to pay off the debt debt?
You'd be paying 2017's portion of that interest. Refunding all, you know, if you're not, you wouldn't be paying 19 through 29's portion of that interest. So that fifty-six thousand dollars would reduce by whatever interest, um, disaccrued in 19 through 29.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because that, that interest payment in nineteen, seventeen isn't just for seventeen, it's for seventeen for now. So we'd be cutting out the interest in nineteen.
If they compound, so I can.
Yeah, so that. That makes sense. And I guess I'd point out one more thing now that I thought about it. Uh, TIC amount that is below, um, the average interest rates is 1.98. That's your TIC or your true interest cost, which, uh, buyers of these bonds are demanding premium bonds, which means they're paying more for your bonds for a little bit higher interest rate. And you get that premium, so if you subtract out the, the true interest cost of this finance, it is probably combined about 1.99%. So that's the true cost of the money, which is pretty. And this is also the subject of market conditions.
Okay. Alright, before you ask the next question, let's go back and catch G, actually authorize the storm water drainage improvements. Uh, we had a motion in the second, we had a long discussion about lots of things, so let's have a call on G. Which is ordinance 5002.
Kelly, yes.
Betty, yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Ema.
Yes.
I have Gary, let's go to A, which is Resolution 1216. Uh, what is your desire?
Motion to adopt Resolution 1216 authorizing the operating and general obligation reselling improvement of bonds.
Second to what she said.
They moved to second and additional questions? Correct? Additional questions? You can go back and report, you did a nice job, good discussion.
We'll be back, uh, quite a long next meeting, but it'll be after that to explain several results and give your final.
But being first to ever.
Right.
Ema.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Fween.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Motion, Gary, thank you very much. Thank you. I have Tim, executive session.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would be going to executive session for 15 minutes to discuss matters we made to the purchase of real estate and include the city attorney and the city administrator, return and, senior, you did it, Fween. Seven twenty-one. There you go. Seven twenty-one.
Just around the second.
Two seconds.
The rest of the second. All those payers say aye?
Aye.
Go to the same side. Public's walking the same, we'll be back at seven twenty-one. Back to session, uh, no action, you part of the reports? Ben?
The law I'm having to report right now is not going to be in the last Friday report, the next Friday report, so. So, do you have any question for me?
Were we at, uh, power from the new substation to?
New first, you know, to.
But when are the meetings for public, I missed that in the work.
They have not. They've done it several looking sometime in September.
Good question. Uh, a couple people came to me complaining that the roads that were repaired, they just put out like this weird gravel stuff on there.
All chip seal.
Okay, thank you. I've had several people complain about that. Um, I drive on it, drive fine, it doesn't throw any dust or anything. So whenever we chip seal a road now, that's what's getting, that's.
Isn't it, because the state said the rock, the rock we used to use no longer available for the.
Yeah, I believe it had, it had lived and so, uh, they had a resource, some marginalized. Fair, because I like the surface.
Double rains, the dust will go away.
Right. I don't think we have any. I, I said it doesn't, uh, spell it and it's just their complaint because they think that it's just a rock down. It's not at work for service.
There's a defect in the road. It seals, it's not.
Tim, what exactly does, what is chip sealing for you? Why, why do you chip seal?
It seals the, so very often, uh, the moisture, the moisture is what will promote.
Crabs get filled in and those are all sealed over because the water can run off and burn and get out of the source.
It's not a fix, it's just, it's maintenance.
But well, how long does that extend, road?
I'm sorry.
How long will that extend, the road?
Well.
Is that proper chip sealing?
If. Probably have to end this life. We, we had streets here, Apple streets, uh, twenty years. And we had.
West Lake.
Hasn't. Should seal nothing, it does help.
Okay.
One more question, do you happen to remember when, uh, Moore Second Street was set up for repairs? Or has.
Do you mean north of Garfield?
North of Garfield. Yes.
Uh, next year. I don't believe we have that. That's one of those roads that will never.
Oh, we're, we're talking about north of Second, north of Garfield.
Uh, that street is actually an unapproved street, it's never been actually paved.
It's, uh, the north half, the south half of that line.
Yeah, south half.
It's curving center.
Yeah, yeah.
And then.
It's curving the whole way. It's an unapproved road. But that is one of the required petition by the land owners to, uh, to the city to pay.
That's what that was on.
We chip sealed it off.
But not, it was. Chip seals it last spring, didn't it?
But not north first. This needs to be. And, and I believe that there's no table there, but I think that's, uh, the first street. The chip seal, but, uh, I believe that's all.
Those are all identified in our city year plan and our schedule, how do you order?
They are, I believe, two hundred first is on next year.
Okay. Power issues, anything? We have any knockoff labels?
Yeah, uh, not citywide, that's an individual, I don't see you as far as. They don't really tend to.
Okay. Any other questions? Other perks?
I continue to be impressed, though, Tim, when there's a storm and power goes out and stuff, you and your guys are right out there.
Most of the guys. Well, yeah, they are. It's.
There's a slitter stopping.
He bits the buck.
Still looking for it, yes, thirty minutes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Tim. Tim, he's sitting up there, so. Your turn, I'll be safe. So I guess I wanted to talk about a couple of things, uh, depending on the hottest part of the year. Of course, today, over in, uh, Mayor Havling was making a buck, uh, girl was still, uh, in the car. She evidently got into the car, couldn't get out. So I think as we get into the hotter times of the year here, that, uh, finally it's a health terror of her purpose, but I think we'll keep the car locked at all time, keep the keys so the kids can't get to them. Because this was the case where the child was left in the car, the child just got into the car. So that does make that go hard. Another big, uh, topic that we have going on right now has to do with concealed carry, you know, in, uh, Texas, it just passed along. It allows, uh, concealed carrying in Kansas. I know that we had talked about it here at Bethany, but I don't think they've come to a decision or whatever. Let's do it, it'll allow concealed carry. And I'm not saying that I'm against concealed carry, uh, putting it, but I do believe that, right now in the state Kansas, saying that's why carry wasn't concealed on a person. And I, I, I just had issues with someone who doesn't have any, uh, training or background with weapons and things, that they can just carry down and, and say. So I would recommend that if anyone does decide to go with concealed carry, that they go through with classes, just some training and, you know, things on the walls. So I kind of would make that. Appreciate that, Tim. Appreciate you, the service and, and public safety, all departments do, and, you know, update, you know, Gary and NSMR, if you're arguing carrying vests and you're carrying suit, that's the best. Thanks, Jim, Eric. You want to talk about the car show? Car show is Saturday. In the park, Swiss Park, and, uh, some of the cars, the conveyor will be there today, so.
Good, foster reminds.
It's going to be good, looking forward to it. It's going to be on TV, right? It's going to be on TV. Elbows, unlike the steward. Elbow. Other questions, Tim, public safety?
When does the, Gary, the seal's time on our building have come now? I'm going to take that as an ad.
July 1st of 2017.
Okay, so we got here.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, Tim. Convention and visitor.
Currently, we have eighty fifteen minutes booked for 2016 at the conference center, which is fantastic. We're looking to, to, up for ninety by the end of the year, so we're well, we're looking. And we shift to 2017, but we need to begin shortly, we've already been doing the protocols about those. Uh, the janitorial company, the new janitorial company, uh, the sun truck started today and cleaning the first floor, excluding the office, uh, kitchen and bar. It's been great help since we lost our janitorial staff in June and we're kind of staffing that char, so, uh, Amy's been doing a lot of that work herself. So, and I'm glad to have that started. Transient guest tax numbers came in on Friday, I believe, and we're down about a thousand dollars for this past quarter. So we're still down, but we're up, um, percentage wise, we're, we're the first two quarters, so. If we continue this trend, we're probably going to be down around fifteen, twenty percent at a level for the year. And I'm working on currently, uh, some information, raise some information together from Midwest Living Magazine. We contacted, we're going to do a personal article on Linsburg, uh, some new information, so we're looking at that, we're organizing tomorrow, we'll be sending it in. And in other news, uh, for those of you and I am not totally clueless about this, but, um, Pokemon Go is a new big deal everywhere. There are more people utilizing it than are using Instagram, Facebook and Twitter combined. And right now, I guess Linsburg has become very populated with creators to pick up and points and whatnot. As I guess you can pay to drop those in different places. And one of the big hits in town, like the one you really want, is located across the street from Senior Center somewhere. So if you see a bunch of people congregating, that is the way. And I'm actually beginning to look just a little bit more seriously though, because there are ways that you can tag these with the location being Linsburg. And you can, and this will populate Snapchat conversations that are automated. So it could also get Linsburg's name on Snapchat as well. So I know that sounds crazy, but when you look at marketing, you look at marketing to a wide range of people and people probably can even expect forties, which blows my mind, or utilize it with. Chief Roper was telling his staff today that, like, what she said in the morning, he said there were people out, you know, nosing their phone, walking around.
Because they're different, right? That's why, that's why.
I understand they're different.
Yeah.
I don't know, I told my kids nothing good at that. They didn't. Yeah, no, that's why.
That is a draw, that is a draw for the share just for.
There you go. So, anyway, so we're looking at it, I don't know how seriously, because we also have to keep in mind, um, but not necessarily do people like something gallery one, you know, twelve-year-olds showing up, you know, just in droves and, you know, running into the gallery. Maybe there's probably a family one that someone has dropped in the conference center and she had just some kids they were up in, had a van on this weekend drinking a dance because they were trying to go in the doors to look for them. So, anyway, one of those things, it's just something they have a different approach and look at community lives.
I don't know a lot about it, but I heard lunch today, the Rolling Pals here with the Tepecas who both hosted special events for hunting Pokemon Go's. And one of them, uh, they're going, going hills, it over nine hundred dollars in gate admissions just for that event. So because you can, you have, and you can drop your home, I guess, so if you wanted to do a promotion, you could.
We should ask.
I thought that was.
Holly, I have a question for you on the event, she said we're eighty-six starting to go into ninety, or two, or nine. Of those events, how many good wiki events are there? Are we getting, uh, numbers up there that were, and that you're going to, as far as those type of things? You know, that we, I recall the ones we have about sell, and, you know, looking for. Other than the white truck there, we always have good white trucks. I'm impressed with that. What are you doing on otherwise?
Um, I don't know of a great show off the top of my head, um, as compared to dating weekend events and weekend events, which are mostly studies. Um, I would say that is still the bulk of the business, um, but we're getting more and more of these during the day as it goes, doing, packaging it in these old contracts, I think is going to help us. Um, once I can get out there and market it, I think that that will be helpful.
Okay.
Um, but I don't know the numbers.
So you have roles that will set up, you're, you're looking to do things, you guys have to help that, because I know, I think that, that beers at the weddings and the other things on weekends are really taking off, and, you know, a lot of, we've talked about in council, we're starting to, with wiki, you know, events and those kind of things, so, and work for that.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, last week, we had six events, and one of, I mean, there's only so many days in the weekend, so, um, that's really good, it's just getting them to come back and maybe wrapping them up, and the bulk makes them come back.
Sure.
Um, but also, I think the word is getting out that we provide a good service, services they're not getting at other places, so.
That's great.
That's helpful.
Appreciate that, so. Other questions? Thank you, guys, very much, appreciate it. Other business tonight? House members? Very good, what is your desire on the journal?
Move to the third.
Move to the second, all those payers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. Thank you, and, thank you, public staff, everybody for being here.